Okay, I will call to order our regular meeting. Uh is there a request to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion?
I have none.
Joy.
Hi.
I do.
Hi. Welcome.
Seven A and B as always.
It is seven A, you're right.
Seven A. Could you make sure, could someone make sure that everyone signs in?
Yes.
Hi, everybody, welcome. There is a sign in sheet going around and there's some, um, at least one copy, two copies of the agenda.
Oh yes, seven A.
Um, should we make more copies?
Did you print that?
Yes.
You already have the agenda?
Oh, seven A.
Sure, come on in. Hi, come on in.
Hi there.
Right, and I'm sorry, did we catch what was asked to be removed?
Seven A and B.
So it's seven A and B, and who made the request to remove them?
Seven A.
Uh Joy.
So only Joy asked for items to be removed?
Thank you. Oh, I guess I did also.
It hasn't gone around yet all the way.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, that's correct. Did you have it? Were you seven A and B also?
A and B.
Okay. Great. Okay.
So I guess I change too.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Joyce, Shane, Keith.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, and uh can I have a motion to approve the order of items?
I approve.
Certainly. And can, all in favor, can I get a shout?
I am.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, well, um, it is time for a brief president's verbal report, and.
Yeah, I'm sorry, are the minutes on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
And I want to remove that one too.
Oh.
So that would be five, or no? Let's see the number.
Um, six.
Thank you, yeah.
Six, yes, yeah. Okay, um, I just wanted to um tell you all briefly that I just came back from visiting my family out of state and um uh they're in a small town in northern Idaho and um for the few days that I was there, on the front page of their local newspaper was stories about their local library and the struggles that their library is facing. And uh reading through these articles and then um speaking with a local librarian at the county farmer's market, um I discovered that there was a lot of struggle between the board members themselves. And um uh one of the quotes that stood out from, to me, from uh an article was that one of the board members was concerned that there were, that there was programming that did not necessarily have to do with books. And um it was, he was saying that he didn't feel that the library needed to participate in community building and rather everything should uh revolve solely around books. And another trustee remarked that they didn't quite understand the role of the board. And it upset me to read that, of course, as a uh trustee here and a lover of libraries. But um it also filled me with a lot of gratitude for the fact that not only are we able, as a board, able to come together for the um greatest good of our library and of our community, but um also that we are so committed to supporting our library staff and um and the patrons. And so um so it's so easy to get um comfortable and to um think that maybe this is how all library boards function. So um I just wanted to take that moment to express my gratitude, not only to um my fellow trustees, but also to um the staff here at our library and of course to our patrons who um who truly show up and and show us how much they love our library too. So um so with that.
Yeah, well done.
Yeah, so with that, I just wanted to um, I'll turn it over to Tara for a director's report.
Oh, thank you, that was great, that's great. Um alright, well, hopefully you all have looked at the library design contest entries and placed your vote. We collected a hundred and twenty-four entries total. The breakdown was there were a hundred in the twelve and younger category, ten in the thirteen to seventeen category, and fourteen in the eighteen and older category. Um library staff took the first pass and winnowed that down to the thirty that we have on display. They were evaluating the design and also how it reflected the community, the library and the community. Um, yeah, voting will be up through Saturday. You can go online or you can vote in person. They're all on display down the main aisle across from the commons. Um the three winning designers will receive a gift card. They will get a new library card with their design on it. Um they're gonna get a feature in our quarterly print newsletter in the, what, the winter one, fall one?
Winter.
Winter. And those three designs will join our current library design and be options for when people get new library cards.
Wow.
So.
Very cool.
We will be promoting that starting in um September, which is library card signup.
What happens if people just want a new card?
They can get one.
I mean, if the frog one passes, I want that card.
R A P.
Did you drop that?
Unfortunately, I did, not that crazy.
Um, I wanted to share that what you and our patrons have access to via Libby is about, well, it has expanded. Um, our Metronet Consortium, which is that group of libraries that buys into Overdrive, has opted into the RLA, which stands for Reciprocal Lending Agreement. It's kind of like a Melcat for e-resources. So now when you go onto Libby, you will have, you have access to about fifty-five thousand titles through our Metronet Consortium. That is jumping up to about two hundred thousand titles more. Yes, through this RLA. Um, you will have access, currently you have access to seven libraries, you will have access to three hundred and thirty libraries across the state of Michigan. Um, the downside, if there is a downside, is it takes a little bit of jumping through hoops to get to this. You won't just automatically search all the catalogs when you search in Libby. So this would be, I'm kind of thinking of this as something that super users would really like to use if they're looking for a backlist title that they can't find in Hoopla, they can't find in Libby. Well, then you could, you have to go through all the different consortia and search their catalogs. Um which that's about seven or eight different consortia. Um and any of the library staff are happy to help walk you through that and um make you uh find what you need in Libby. So we're really excited about that.
Wow. Kudos. Yay.
Is it, will there be something written on that at some point?
A tutorial?
Yeah.
Or just an exciting update?
Just, just an update on that.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do something. We'll have to update our instructions on our website.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll, yeah, it'll be a little.
There's a lot to process there. We get a special, you know, overview of it at the board meeting here, but
Okay.
everybody else may need some kind of.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Um Hugo has been working really hard to try to find a waste hauler that will take recycling. So we will be able to finally have a recycling program for staff and patrons here at the library. Um he's done a bunch of legwork and research and um has determined that priority waste, which is who the township has recently won with, um is the best option for us. So we're still in the very preliminary stages of making this transition. It'll be a little bit more money per year, but about a thousand dollars more a year to be able to have recycling, we think will be really worth it.
Can I just ask what type of recycling, please?
Um it'll definitely paper, and they will, they will take, they will take hardcover books, which right now we just.
Is that, isn't that what we're doing in that yellow container?
Only paperbacks.
Oh, okay, okay.
And paper, yeah. Um but also plastic, um I'm hoping.
I'm only, you seem like vermin's because um we had issues at um some of the other places that we tried it with um vermin because the things aren't clean.
Oh, interesting. Oh.
And so, um you know, because you're not picking it up, you, when we recycle, we keep it in the garage or wherever you do it, and it's sealed, but if somebody leaves it open or they throw in food or something like that, it's, um and we don't want that. So we don't want to attract that, and as nice as it is, it's also, you just have to, you know, be cautious of that. I mean, anything from, um, or you can get um lots of flies, um you know, because of, um, someone might throw in a plastic Starbucks container and um and it was just, it was horrible, so, because you had to then get rid of the vermin, so.
Okay, alright, well.
Just use caution on what you, what you decide should be recycled. I think paper's great, um but I, the others, I'm just a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, alright, thank you for that.
And when is this expected to start?
We don't know yet. We're still in the very preliminary stages of making this transition. Um Monica and I have been making little um baby steps here and there about moving forward with the millage rate and timing of asking for the renewal of that twenty-fourteen millage. Um she and I met today with Jason Tyson, Darren Kratz at the township. Um and they gave us some tips on how to try to figure out this millage rate, so we're still working on that. Next steps would be to work with an attorney to draft the ballot language, and then we have to present this to the board of trustees at the township and ask them to get on the ballot, ask them if they will do this for us. Um and then we apply, we have to file a deadline, just like you all did, when you wanted to be on the ballot, um to get on the ballot. I'm thinking that we could go on the February ballot with the presidential primary and get this decided sooner rather than later.
Oh, interesting.
So, that kind of moves the timeline a little.
I was gonna say, that's huge, okay. And we can do it, because the last time was, we had three months.
Exactly.
So, okay.
So, more to come on that, just baby steps so far. Um a reminder to review all of the dates at the end of the board packet for the dates for, for the board. There's like four weeks in a row where you guys have to come to meetings. So just make sure you're looking at that. Um I have some sad news to share. Um Lyle Dahlberg, who has one of, been one of our ambassadors and a long time time library supporter, passed away.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
I know.
That's what I said too. Um.
Can we just see?
Yeah, he was an ambassador.
I don't think he was at the last one, but he was, I think he was at the February or January one.
Not too long ago. He was, he was at that one, yeah, because he had a nice.
Oh, I'm so sorry to hear that.
It must have been summer.
Yeah, I guess he had been sick for a while.
Yeah, he had said that he wasn't feeling well, but.
Yeah. Um. I can share the, the obituary and the visitation information if you're interested. I think the visitation was tomorrow. Do you remember when the funeral was?
The Halloween Day, the twelfth.
Okay.
Why, could you send it to the patrons?
I will, yeah. Um and Lyle named, or his family named us and Common Ground as places to send donations in his memory, so. Um and then the last thing is, I don't know if you all noticed, that we had a stop-motion animation workshop um last week at the library. It was geared towards like tweens, and I wanted to share the video that was made. Um and so Catherine is gonna attempt to pull that up. It's about three minutes. It's very quirky. There's some repetition, because I think they must have had like the same assignment, but a different kid did it.
I've already watched the morning scene.
Great.
In the minds of ten-year-olds, right? Twelve-year-olds, right?
Twelve tweens, yeah.
True. Remember that this one passed the test already, really related to its. But they're definitely learned.
Yeah, some very creative tweens in our community.
There was a lot of great energy in the room.
I bet.
People were expressing some things. I'm so glad this is getting a wider audience.
I know, I know.
So, yay. Alright, thank you for bearing with me on that, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you so much. Um can I have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items?
Smooth.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so uh now we will have, we'll go on to the call to the public. And is, is there anybody here visiting from the public that would like to speak?
There's a spokesperson.
Can you all, are you guys all together?
We're.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
We're all IAs.
Central, yeah.
IA?
Our government class.
Okay.
Oh.
Did you have to pick a meeting to attend?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I was government, I went differently.
It does?
Yeah, my mother was library.
Oh, wonderful.
So, is that, is that the reason everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, wow.
Yeah, well, so.
Oh.
Great.
Would you mind sharing your mother's name?
Well, what place are you here?
Uh Jennifer Tronley.
Jennifer.
She worked at West Bloomfield a few years ago.
Oh, oh, God, wow.
That's great.
Oh, I thought she worked here, okay.
Well, it's great that you guys are here.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Always welcome, anytime.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions after the meeting, we're happy to talk about it.
Thank you.
Is this a familiar place to you all to begin with?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. This is probably your library.
Wonderful.
Were you expecting something more exciting?
Were you expecting stop-motion animation?
It's like when people bring their kids to work, I don't know what the kids are expecting, you know?
Right.
So you said you wa, so you watched the videos of prior meetings?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, there we go.
Any questions?
Catherine? Should we dress better or?
Thanks for being here.
Well, I'm Tara Moon, I'm the library director. Catherine is the assistant library director. Lyndon down there is the administrative assistant, she's taking the minutes. And then these are all the trustees. This is Judy, this is Joy, Shane, Keith, and Danny, and we're missing one trustee who couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you.
So, and you got the message that the date changed too.
Yeah.
That's good.
Great.
Well, thanks for being here.
And please feel free to ask any questions after the meeting. Uh okay, thank you. We will move on to unfinished business, but I don't believe we have any. And um so now we will move on to new business, so I'm gonna turn that over to Catherine to discuss our annual report.
Alright, let me turn my screen back on. Alright, so this is our twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual report. Um you've had the chance to review it in the board packet, and there is the trifold brochure going around that we do share with the public. Um and the annual report is really an opportunity to reflect on the year that has passed and to preserve the story of the library for future trustees, staff, and community members. The big story for this particular year is how the library emerged from the pandemic along with the rest of the world. The library successfully returned to full service and witnessed a resurgence in visitors, circulation, and programs, uh reaffirming the role of the library in the township. It was actually interesting, we were digging for program uh flyers for the big binder that you see there in front of you, that's the complete annual report, and kind of almost forgot how few in-person programs we had even uh as recently as spring of twenty-twenty-two. And how it really didn't come back to full swing until last fall and winter. Um, we also embarked on creating a strategic plan to guide us for the next three to five years, ensuring that the library continues to adapt and meet the evolving needs of our community. And the library was honored as one of America's star libraries in the twenty-twenty-two Library Journal Index of Public Library Service, winning four stars as a first-time honoree. So here are some more details. Oh, Tara.
I was just gonna say that the slides are advancing, but not me. There were any slides. I was just being very wordy on that opening slide.
Um so our strategic plan, the library started the strategic planning product, process with a request for proposals for a consultant in spring of twenty-twenty-two. In June, this library board awarded that bid to Fast Forward Libraries led by Amanda Standifer. Um a committee of staff and trustees was formed to create the plan with Fast Forward Libraries, and the plan was done in three phases, learn, dream, and do. In the learn phase, we collected survey uh and other input from over five hundred community members, staff, and trustees. Um those findings were compiled in a sixty-five-page learning report along with library and demographic data. In the dream phase, the leadership team and trustees participated in four-hour retreats to synthesize that data and imagine the future of the library. And in the do phase, the strategic planning committee drafted and presented the actual plan along with the revised vision and mission statements you see up here. And this plan was adopted by this board of trustees at their December twenty-twenty-two meeting. And so the three main tenants of our strategic plan are to enhance our core, connect the community, and build organizational capacity. And within each of those three is a whole host of other goals and action plans to uh to meet those goals. Alright, programs and events, as I said, those really went back into full swing during this um fiscal year that we're talking about. Summer and winter reading programs encourage people of all ages to read for fun, log their progress, and earn virtual badges to win prizes. We have five hundred and thirty-nine excited readers in the summer reading program. And for the first time at this library, each week of summer reading, a prize patrol randomly selected and visited two households with "Love My Library" signs in their yards to deliver prize bags filled with library and book-themed goodies. And in the colder months, over two hundred readers registered for the winter reading challenge, and we did not send stuff out to the cold weather. Um youth services hosted a bunch of special events throughout the year, including a library-wide trick-or-treat event. You can see Baby Shark up there. Um and that event was made extra spooky when the power went out unexpectedly as the event started. But around two, uh around six hundred guests stayed for the enhanced atmosphere and the lights came back on partway through the evening. Other special events for children and families included a mermazing party celebrating all things mermaid, a cozy family fortnight, uh held after hours, family game night, and a stuffed animal sleepover. And then we also hosted um a lot of music and dance programming throughout the year. Fall twenty-twenty-two brought the twelfth season of our chamber music concerts presented by students from the U of M School of Music Theater and Dance and sponsored by the Friends of the Library. Patrons were excited for the return of that series after a two-year hiatus due to the pandemic. And then the Great Lakes Chamber Music Festival partnered with the library in June to host in conversation with Richard Powers and Perry Goldstein, at which the prize, Pulitzer Prize-winning author and the noted composer came together to talk about their longtime friendship and professional collaborations. Let's see. The library's sixth annual photo contest closed in April of twenty-twenty-two. That year's theme was "Tell Us a Story." Where township residents were invited to submit photographs that included the elements of a story within the frame, setting a scene rather than capturing a single moment. Twenty-five participants submitted forty-six photos. This was the best in show. And this was the People's Choice Award winner. And here you can see first, second, and third place in each of the three age categories. Uh the little chick mission, uh with the little kid on the diving board, that won first place in adult as well as the People's Choice.
But these aren't the same photos that we were just looking at a few weeks ago, right?
Right, because those were part of this current fiscal year.
Ah, okay.
And so this annual report looks way back to over a year ago, yeah.
So this is last year. Done, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Um behind the scenes, this is one delivery of boxes of books, yep.
Books.
Um library staff worked hard to expand access to various collections, increase digital security, and improve the patron experience. Youth services worked with technical services to create an intermediate fiction collection, which is perfect for children who have advanced beyond those learning to read books but aren't quite ready for a wide range of chapter books meant for second to eighth grade. Um they also updated kits in our accessibility support collection, getting them ready to come back out after the pandemic by replacing soft surface materials that were difficult to clean with hard surface materials that could be easily sanitized. And then uh technical services also condensed our television series DVDs into cases containing all seasons of a particular show, so it's much easier for patrons to binge-watch whatever they want.
That's a great idea.
To binge-watch, yes.
That's a great idea.
Yes. Um our systems department focused on increasing the security of the library's network applications and user accounts, uh working on what they called the seven-layer burrito of network security. And this included implementing uh multi-factor authentication, updating the firewall servers, and multiple other systems. Alright, there we go. Um our friends of the library resumed their second Saturday book sales this year. They seem to set a new sales record every few months. Uh it was, yeah, delightfully redundant to keep congratulating them on how much they made. Um notably, uh their March twenty-twenty-three sale expanded and included a half-off sale on Sunday and brought in nearly eight thousand dollars in one weekend. Their sale also expanded from only two rooms in the lower level to four rooms, each showcasing a special collection. Donations continued to flow steadily throughout the year. And the Friends provided almost fifty thousand dollars in gifts to the library, used to fund our chamber music concert series, updated uh kits, water bottle filling stations, whiteboards for patrons to use, and the materials for our kindergarten readers roundup. So each kindergarten class that attended um kindergarten readers roundup this year, uh each child received one of these kits with their very own elephant and pinky book. Um out in the community, we were able to collaborate a lot more. We actually just went to IA for your, end of your picnic a few months ago. I don't know if anybody got a rubber ducky from us there? Alright, cool. Um so we were finally able to start going out and being with people in the community again. Uh we hosted tables at several Bloomfield Hills Schools nights um and worked with Bloomfield Township Senior Services. Staff visited classes and preschools throughout the year to promote the love of reading and share information about the library reaching thousands of kids and teens. Uh our librarians also led storytimes and activities at Johnson Nature Center and Bauer School Farm, including a story walk. We held our annual staff development day on Friday, May sixth. Training was done via Zoom that year, uh with half the staff attending from in the building and half attending from home. Um at that staff development day, we explored diversity, equity, and inclusion in a main session led by the Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion called the D N A of D E I. And then we had afternoon breakout sessions geared towards creativity, relaxation, and team building, as well as department meetings. Other training opportunities last year included active shooter training from the Bloomfield Township Police Department, um as well as CPR and AED training, uh led by the Bloomfield Township Fire Department. That's you.
Oh.
Um I was gonna also for this, but maybe the students would like to learn a little bit about our library trustees, so I will give you the full spiel. Um our library trustees are all residents of Bloomfield Township and are typically elected every four years. This year, two board positions were on the November ballot because the trustees in those positions had resigned in the middle of their terms. Um when a vacancy occurs, the board initiates a procedure to fill the vacancy with an appointed trustee, and then any appointees are required to run in the next general election. Three candidates ran for two open positions in November, and appointees Danny Gilman and Shane Spradlin were elected. Two other trustees resigned this past year after the deadline for the November election. Keith Cardner and Joy Murray were appointed to those positions through the Board of. Keith Cardner and Joy Murray were appointed to those positions through the Board of Trustees vacancy procedure. All the trustees in this room, their terms will expire in November two zero twenty four, and if they choose, they will all run for the election. And our board of trustees meets monthly on the third Tuesday, except in April when it's the fourth Tuesday, or except if we need to reschedule for a Wednesday. And meetings are held at seven P M. here in the boardroom. And here are a few statistics. We have three, over three hundred and fifteen thousand items in the collection, total circulation of over six hundred and fifteen thousand checkouts last year, one hundred and ninety one thousand visitors, and this is all an increase over the previous year, uh, a market increase. So, um, that is the two zero twenty two, two zero twenty three year. We are already a quarter of the way into this year. And we're collecting all this information as it comes in to add to the annual report. That binder right there includes all this information and much more, including reports from each department, all of our newsletters and flyers from the past year. Uh, and that lives on, um, in our library archive. Good job.
Bravo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is great, great.
Very nice job.
And this is available on our website too, or will be shortly.
Yes.
Well, there is an action item here. Um, would somebody like to read the motion on page twenty nine?
I'll do it. Um, I move to accept the library annual report and annual investment report for fiscal year two zero twenty two, two zero twenty three.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thanks so much, Catherine.
Yes, great job.
Um, okay, I'm gonna take a deep breath before I.
Let me just get to the right thing.
Get me a wrinkle line a little bit.
Sure.
Yes, we're gonna discuss the door access bid.
Yes, so, um, our, we use these swipe cards to get around the library. Because this building has been added on to a few times, we don't have a clear backup house in front of house, so, um, we are constantly in and out of doors all day long. Currently, I'm not familiar with under. Currently, we use a, um, you know, these cards, and there is hardware installed on the doll, on the doors. And then there's software that runs, you know, it gives people permissions based on their position and other things. And then, um, every week, Lyndon has to go in and program the doors for meetings. She has to, um, make sure the door to the downstairs is open and elevator is turned on in case there is a meeting. So there's a lot that goes into maintaining our doors. The software that we use is called Key Scan. It's so old, it runs on a Windows ninety eight machine, and Lyndon is the only person who has access to it. Um.
Okay.
It's really.
Are you on the correct note?
It's really bad. It's really, really bad. Um, Key Scan is also no, uh, an obsolete piece of technology. It's no longer being supported, and so if it were to die or if a part was needed, we would be out of luck.
Yeah, that's a while, yeah.
Yes. So, um, Hugo has a lot of experience at other locations, um, with this sort of hardware and software, and had some really great contacts, um, and really lit a fire under all of us to move forward with this project. Um, and so we put in an R F P, and I'm gonna let Catherine take over and tell you about how that went and what we are recommending tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, so we released the R F P, um, in May, on May fifteenth. We sent it to three companies, posted it on our website, and made it available at the welcome desk. It is included in the board packet and here on the table.
R F P is a request for proposals, so we wanted companies to tell us what they could do on this project.
Yeah, when we spend over a certain amount of money on a project, we have to get bids from different companies so that we make sure that we're getting the best, uh, it's a company.
Best company shopping.
Like co- contracting?
Yeah, yeah. It's like shopping, sort of.
Comparing shopping, yeah. Like if you're trying to buy something big, you might look at a couple of different stores to find the best price, the best, uh, amenities with it. Um, so, three companies requested a walkthrough during, um, the period that the bid was open. That was the Flying Locksmiths Detroit North, Johnson Controls Security Solutions, and Presidio. Um, Hugo led them on a walkthrough of the building, and those three companies submitted proposals to us. Interestingly, one of those companies we did not send the proposal to, they found it on their own, and one of the companies that we did send the, uh, R F P to, uh, did not, uh, bid on the project. Um, so Hugo, Tara, me, and, uh, Systems Department head Paul Zink, thank you, all reviewed the proposals carefully and, oh, I see right there. Uh, all reviewed the proposals very carefully, came up with still some questions that we needed to ask and set up interviews with each of the three companies. Uh, we created a proposal analysis that is also included in the board packet. Presidio's proposal came in the highest at, uh, over one fifty seven. They also didn't include several elements in their initial proposal and estimated a twenty five week lead time for some of the parts. Johnson Controls quoted a hundred and thirty thousand for the project and did provide a complete proposal. They estimated four to six weeks, um, to order and receive equipment with an estimated completion date of mid to late September. And then the Flying Locksmiths came in at the lowest price, one hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and also provided a complete proposal. They estimated that the project could be completed by mid August. They had all the pieces in stock. They have also done similar projects for Rochester Hills Public Library and Clinton McComb Public Library, uh, who both provided stellar references, um, for this company. And then further, Hugo has worked with the Flying Locksmiths when he worked, uh, in Waterford Township on a similar project. Uh, they're a small company, and in the interview, they really emphasized, um, constant communication was the quote. Uh, because this will be somewhat disruptive to library, um, business for a couple of weeks during the installation period as they take down one system and set up another system. Uh, so they talked about having a big planning meeting before they get started, daily check-ins, and even posting a whiteboard by the staff entrance listing which areas would be worked on that day. So all staff know what's going to be accessible as they come and go throughout their business all day. Um, so for all those reasons, we, um, recommend going with the Flying Locksmiths for this, um, project. And if you agree, there's some, is that your, that's your line?
If you agree, there's a motion.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Do you have any questions about this?
Yes. Hugo has worked with them in the past?
Yes.
So I don't see him at this meeting, and I guess I wouldn't mind hearing what he has to say about them in person.
Are you suggesting that we not vote on this?
Yes, I'm suggesting we wait until the B and G meeting when Hugo is there so that we can talk with him further about it.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Um, well, let's see.
That's for, that's three weeks from now?
It's three weeks.
Tense.
If you're gonna vote on something at that meeting, though, it has to be an open meeting. We'd have to post it.
Oh, I see.
I'm just curious what your concerns are, because he's already worked with them and said that he likes them, and they, they've checked on the references, so I, I don't.
Right. I don't know. I just, I noticed that Johnson Controls has also done some fairly substantial projects, um, including West Bloomfield Public Library, which is probably a good sized library, maybe similar to this one, maybe even potentially larger. I'm not sure.
Yeah, they have two branches.
Yeah, so, um.
Clinton McComb is also a very big library.
Clinton McComb is huge, right?
Rochester is known to us too.
Yes, enormous.
Okay.
Clinton McComb has three branches.
I've worked with Johnson Controls many times over the years, because they're a, they're a significant automotive supplier, they're a very solid company, and
I don't know if anyone would think it's a, I own stock in Johnson Controls.
they have a lot of depth and a lot of resources and.
I just, um, I just invented that I own a lot of stock in Johnson Controls, so I don't know if that would be a, I, you know, if we decided we wanted to go with them, I would not vote. I would obviously abstain because.
Sometimes. Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Fair enough. So I, I guess I would just like to hear more about what he has to say about the Flying Locksmiths. You know, in my experience, it just strikes me as funny that the Flying Locksmiths is thirty percent less than the highest quote. And in my experience, there is the low bidder, there's the high bidder, and then there's the one in the middle. And it's usually the one in the middle that makes the most sense. Um, so I, I would like to just hear more about what Hugo has to say about them.
Well, I, you know, I'm not gonna speak for Hugo, but I can tell you, um, I guess some of the things that he has told us and some of the reasons why we all agreed that Flying Locksmiths was the best.
Okay.
Um, our, our choice. To your point about the lowest bidder and the small company, um, we, we, we feel kind of burned by our vending experience.
Okay, that's exactly what I had in mind, yeah.
However, um, because Flying Locksmiths is a smaller company, we feel that they can be a lot more agile and nimble. And because this is gonna be a very, um, disruptive, uh, possibly fluid process, we like that aspect of them.
Right, they also might not have the depth of experience to handle issues that come up.
And constant communication.
That's another possibility too.
Sure, yeah. Well, they have done this project at Rochester Hills and Clinton McComb, and both, the, the contacts at both of those libraries have answered tons of questions for Hugo and Paul and Catherine, um, while we researched this project. And both of them had wonderful things to say about Flying Locksmiths. I can say that, um, when we did the interviews, um, that was the first time that I had contact with all of the companies. Flying Locksmiths seemed the most prepared. They answered our questions the best. As Catherine said, they, um, said we would be in constant communication, which is my love language. Um, they just seemed like they really wanted the job. Johnson Controls and Presidio, you know, they did fine. They were able to address the questions. I'm sure they would be fine. Uh, but we felt that with the lower price, um, and the, the experience from Hugo, the experience from the other libraries and their great references, and the fact that it seemed like they could really, um, just be agile and nimble and, and do what we needed to do. Also, they are locksmiths, whereas Presidio and Johnson Controls would have to hire locksmiths and coordinate that as kind of a subcontractor. The Flying Locksmiths has locksmiths on their, they are locksmiths. In fact, when we were speaking to them and they said, and we were talking about, um, you know, how would this look, what, how would we do this? They said, look, we could rekey all your locks and give everybody a new key and get through the day that way. So we just feel that they had a lot more to offer in terms of solutions.
Okay. Um, a couple of things of note, um, this sorority house that I work with, fifty individuals live there, um, has a keyless entry system, and there's a software company, and then there are the other people that actually manage the system. And, um, it's difficult sometimes to get the two to talk to one another. So I hear your, um, thoughts about working with locksmiths, because it's, it's really a marriage of locksmith and security software is really what we're talking about here. But it's also had how the security software goes through the system, right? Um, one of the things that I noticed was a, a little bit of a bias, even looking at them going, the Flying Locksmiths, what the heck is that?
I love it.
And I was kind of laughing about it, and then I looked at their background. They're established in nineteen forty seven. They have ninety locations throughout the United States, wide range of commercial business experience. So I, I was kind of taken aback. I didn't realize Johnson Controls was also eighteen seventy four, so they're, they're very well-tread as well. I, I guess from a, from a trustee standpoint, to me, the vending situation almost makes you more hyper sensitive to choosing the right vendor. And I think that gut is, um, as much, uh, a feeling as, as the experience. And the references, I think, are real, are very important. And I think if Hugo has worked with them specifically, worked with them directly, um, in a similar situation, then I'm good to take his annual recommendation. I guess that's my thinking.
You mentioned the software. Um, I forgot to talk about that. Um, Open Path would be the replacement for Key Scan. That would be the software that would control the doors. And yeah, Flying Locksmiths has a lot of experience with them. I think they said they were like a preferred vendor contract.
Premium, was, I believe, the, the term used, and that was confirmed by the, uh, reference at Clinton McComb Public Library.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the Flying Locksmiths also have worked connect, connect.
Communico.
Communico. Um, so eventually, like the, the, um, study room doors would also get this new, um, hardware and software. And we would be able to reserve study rooms in advance through an online system. And that is kind of an, another software vendor, Communico, that would be working with Open Path. And the Flying Locksmiths have helped to establish that relationship and get those two companies working so that their systems can work together. And Clinton McComb said, you know, when we have a question or if a problem arises, we call the Flying Locksmiths. They get on a four-way call with, um, Communico and Open Path to resolve the problem. And there aren't a lot of layers or getting a different salesperson each time you have your account person that you talk to.
If that's what your feeling is, I won't stand in the way. I'm good with it.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hope it works out.
It was a good conversation.
Me too, Keith, me too.
It will, the vending machine, I mean, I've been on the board. I always started when I was two, but I've been on the board when I was fif- for fif- fifteen, going on fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
And we've never had an, ever had an issue until the vending machines.
Okay.
With every contract we go, the due diligence beyond, behind the scenes, and when it comes to us, it's like, here's the package, and we've tied the bow, um, we're gonna unveil, you know, unwrap the package. Um, it's not from Tiffany's, unfortunately, but, uh, we're gonna unwrap the package, and we're gonna tell you everything that we learned and found except for the vending machines. And I know that that's raw, um, particularly being so new on the board, but, um, yeah, I, 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 I know it will work fine, what we have. I mean, you heard the laughter, nineteen ninety eight. Um, I don't think any of you were bored then. So, um, anyway, yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, we do have a motion on page forty seven. Do you have that pulled up, Shane?
Shortly. I was gonna ask Keith to read it. That would be, to be fair, right?
I was looking forward to the bottom.
I got it.
I'm happy to read it.
Now it's page forty seven.
I, I got it, I got it.
Oh, you got it.
I moved the.
Oh, oh, I went.
I moved the Flying Locksmiths Detroit North, two six eight five, Lapea Road, Suite two ten, Auburn Hills, Michigan, four eight three two six. We awarded the contract for the door access upgrade bid for Bloomfield Township Public Library for an amount not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We'll keep you posted on how this goes.
Yeah.
Hopefully it's great.
It will be great.
It will. It will. It's a, it's a necessary upgrade too.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, it is now time for us to discuss the items removed from the consent agenda. And those are, uh, somebody wanted to discuss the minutes?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
If you guys look at page nine, I just had a, a suggestion to them.
Uh-huh.
On the bottom in the, in the last full paragraph, it says, uh, spread the nest about the funds in the fifth air checking account. It said he commented on the low basis points. I'd suggest we stay and said, um, he asked whether the library was earning appropriate yields and requested clarification. So just the changes, delete, commented on the low basis points, insert, asked whether the library was earning appropriate yields.
Okay.
And then the next page.
We got that, Lyndon?
Okay.
The next page, we say the next library board reading will be Tuesday, but it wasn't. We could say here was scheduled for Tuesday.
Oh.
Except that these are minutes of that night, so they reflect what happened that night, so that was said, that it was going to be Tuesday.
They reflect what happened that night.
Right, right.
You know, you can't correct them to be.
Was scheduled for, but okay, whatever you want. As you know.
That's right.
All right, thank you, Shane.
Okay, thank you. And, um, let's move on to seven A.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'll start. On the, um, red, to the, the, the payment to red level for the cell signal booster project. I was just wondering how that was going.
It hasn't started yet.
Okay.
So it's going great.
Okay.
It will start shortly. We had to, um, uh, we, they wanted them money upfront so they could order parts, and then they'll get going. But I'm told that once it gets, once they have all the stuff in, it will take a day.
Okay.
So hopefully by the August board meeting, yeah.
Just today?
Wow.
So these are for, I guess, boosters and.
Yeah, so it's all gonna.
Digital wireless routers or whatever the case.
Yeah, it's gonna boost the cell signal, so there's gonna be an antenna installed on the roof.
Oh, that's right. This is cell, not wireless.
Yep.
Right.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah.
And then the boosters will be just on the lower level.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. What else?
And was there an item in, uh, were there any other items on seven A?
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
And a couple of.
And a couple, actually the, I think the first one was the shred corp. Is that to pay for the one that's upcoming on the twenty ninth? Yep, okay. Um and then also the LinkedIn learning for sixty three hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, or maybe the question is, can you explain to me what that is for? Is that for the learning sessions that are offered, certificates that people can take?
Yeah, it's for um that online resource. It used to be called Lynda dot com.
Oh, okay, yes, yes.
And then LinkedIn bought it a few months ago. Now it's LinkedIn Learning. So you can kind of take little classes in all kinds of things, all kinds of things.
It's very good. Um is it also, can a library patron use it if they don't have a LinkedIn subscription at home or haven't created a LinkedIn account for themselves?
I believe so. I do that as well. I think you just have to create an account when you um start to use it. But yeah, I don't think you can do it online.
And it would save, potentially.
Save money?
No, save, would it save it in the system because it's up in the cloud?
I think so. I haven't ever.
I've used LinkedIn Learning before. It doesn't like create, you have to create an account with LinkedIn Learning. It does not create a LinkedIn account or profile.
Right, but can you, I guess is what I'm asking, is that? I guess you don't have to through it. I I'm just wondering um how how would that help patrons? But I'm I'm recognizing that LinkedIn, you can create an account on LinkedIn and there's no charge for it. So as long as you have access to internet, okay.
Yeah.
So I think that's a great service. Well, thank you for clarifying.
It's an annual.
Mm-hmm.
Subscription.
Yep. It's very useful. If you have anything, especially computer related that that you are not sure how to do or you want to delve deeper into, I highly recommend it.
Yeah. But it's even things like interpersonal communications or dealing with conflict or, yeah, short, short tutorials.
I mostly use it because I'm bad at spreadsheets.
Hmm, yeah.
Oh, that too.
Yeah.
How do you know?
Are you saying, yes, she is bad at spreadsheets?
No, Catherine is amazing at spreadsheet. I'm saying, I'm also bad at spreadsheets.
Who are.
Yeah, you are. I'm also bad at spreadsheets.
I was agreeing to it as well. I said yes to meeting myself.
So this is not a new service?
Just a different name.
Uh-huh, okay.
Thank you for clarification.
Great.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um are we done with seven A and ready to move on to seven B?
I've got some.
Bs or As?
As.
Okay, let's hear it.
Is the Comic City one, is that when, we had the food trucks here?
No, that was when we gave out free comic books.
Like, it was a comic back day.
This one was.
How did I miss that?
I don't know. There were probably some.
I love free comic books.
Tri- on some trip somewhere inside of.
That's how.
It was, yeah, in May. It's like Comic Book Day.
Yeah. It was May. It was a while ago, yeah.
Okay.
I missed it too.
Next time. And then the reissue of the check, I I just was a little concerned about that one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. For consumers?
Yeah, what happened with that?
Um.
It's on page eleven.
Yeah, so I don't know. They just, they didn't receive our payment. They they sent us like a shut off notice. But at the same time, we had heard that there were some problems all like globally for consumers. So we didn't worry too much about it. We just told them, you can't shut us off. We're a public building and you know, the check is in the mail. They received our our next payment. And so we decided to stop payment on the check and reissue it. And guess who tried to cash their um check today? Consumers.
Wow.
Right.
So they just, I think it was just some kind of misorganization.
Are we writing paper checks out of the?
That was my next question.
We are, yes.
Will they accept electronic checks?
Or we don't do that. We just don't do that because we have to send them up to the township and they have to sign.
That's right.
That's right. We have this conversation.
And they're keeping check companies.
Yeah, well, that's good. And then the alligator sanctuary, just curious on that one. What's the performance?
Um it's the.
Catch an alligator?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
It's the thing of the tomorrow's.
Hour thirty.
They're gonna bring in some alligators and people have a chance to see alligators up close.
I'm gonna be there.
I mean, I'll be golfing, but.
You might find an alligator on the course. You never know if you are in Florida.
That's true. Well, who knows in Michigan anymore.
Yeah. Kind of swampy these days.
Um and then I would note on uh fifteen, you've got Orange Boy. And I'm sure that's a wonderful service, but we've talked historically about perhaps doing a list of all of our online platforms. I know we can see them, but I just can't pull them out. You don't even.
I know, it's.
Reiterate a request for that at some point.
Okay, it it's um in the works. We think about it and talk about it. Orange Boy actually isn't for the public though. That is what we use for our e-newsletter subscription, subscription service.
Okay, fair point, yeah.
So it's not newspaper? It's newsletter.
E-newsletter?
Understood, yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha. Then I'm on B, but do you read the all names?
No, no, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, do you wanna go B?
I'm, I'm.
Okay.
I'm done.
B is the bu- is the budget.
Yep.
So you look at, you know, I look at the second column there. There's the budget as of July, okay. And then you look at the one, two, three, fourth column, revenue expense year to date. So we, our revenue is is paltry as compared to, but I'm not really worried about that because that's just timing. Our expenses are sixteen percent and we're twenty five percent of the way through the year.
Yep.
Should I read it? I mean, are we doing great or is that just timing too?
It, we're doing good. We're doing good. I think that sixteen percent is thrown off a little bit by the fact that we haven't really spent much out of the other operating expenditures column. Because you see everything else there above that is twenty three, yeah. So it's thrown off, but yeah, we're doing good.
Yeah, I see the three hundred percent, yeah. Okay, good. And then if you skip forward two pages, this is again the yields we talked about at the last meeting. I don't know, any thoughts on that?
We're working on it. Monica is doing some research to find um a different instrument that we can put that that money in. So we're working on that.
Okay. Um next, forward the next page is the fines. At one point you solicited whether there was any information we do want more of or don't want. This page in my mind is
We don't want this. Not useful.
Not terribly interesting.
Oh, really? See, I I find it interesting because every so often we en- entertain the idea of um.
Fines.
Being fined, yes.
Yes. And so, you know, but it might not be, we may not.
And with yield to the present act, no problem.
But we may not need it um monthly, but.
But I noted how much it's gone down.
Yeah.
What's, what's.
The deal, auto renewal?
I told Anna she can't check out anymore.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, got it. Thank you for the difference. It's like coming out of your pocket. The auto renew, gotcha. Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's like good or bad? Good from a patient.
I think it's good.
But it's great service and it's good service and a nice service.
I like it.
Yeah. I think so too.
Well, the policy committee may um have to entertain a policy or a change of going fines free this this year.
Here we go, Shane.
Huh, I love that.
You and me.
Mm-hmm.
We'll sneak preview for you.
That's right.
But the auto renewes are only, it only happens a couple times, right? It only auto renews, yes. And then um and won't if there's a hold on material.
Mm, twenty, yeah.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that it's not pushing out someone's, you know.
Catching out.
You'll find that there's a high, high.
Slapping on.
Um and you have a book that you didn't realize a book club was going to have and then they, you know, they won't renew it because everyone wants that book, yeah.
Kind of. So I won't complain about my ten weeks of waiting. Another conversation.
I'm done.
What, you're done?
Okay.
Anyone else?
Does anybody else have anything on seven B? Okay.
Thank you. I love your questions.
Yes, and now can I have a motion to approve the items removed from the consent agenda?
So moved?
At the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. And now is uh time for other. So is there any other other?
I don't, I don't know if this is the right time or not. I had a question on some of these uh fund balances. Starting on page forty three, carry your memo, April twenty fifth.
Forty three, let me see, hang on, we'll get there.
Forty three. So basically, I, it says, it has the fund, the purpose of the fund. Do these, are these funds set up so that the only thing that you can touch is the distribution amount? So they'll stay forever?
Yeah. They're held by the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan. And so every year we, they tell us what the payout will be and we decide whether or not we're gonna take it for that year.
And how does that decision get made?
Um it depends. Some of them, it's a conversation with the department heads. Others, it's um just an administration conversation.
Okay, so these, literally these funds will last forever?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. And grow at some point.
Well, the Meyer Scholarship one, of course, is the most active. We've done that every year. But I will say that the fair rating has never been, we've never drawn anything down from that. And that's all for landscaping and and outdoor things, but.
We've drawn a couple things, but we don't do it every, it's been a while.
It's been a while that I can't recall. So, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We have, the library director's legacy one, I would never drawn on that because it just um, the payout has been very minimal because of it.
It's so new. Yeah.
That's all.
Uh I have a couple other others from um the friends who had another record sale in July.
What, yeah.
Five thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. Um a couple of things to note. There are record sales in the shop. Especially, and they were pretty excited to hear about the early voting that might create some additional traffic, um as we all were. Um they've had one change in um board member that they made last, uh this month. And then also the next month's focus is gonna be back to school materials. So um.
You mean their sale next month's sale?
Their sale is gonna focus on back to school. Um yeah, specifically, well, they didn't really specify if it was, if it was teachers, although they were talking more about teachers, teacher materials. But I think for kids as well. I think they're giving teachers twenty percent of the items for their classroom. Yes, that's what it was. Okay, yeah. Um yes. Also, um I just wanted to note, and I don't know what page it's on, but it was circulation numbers and gate count and.
Yeah, the activity report.
Um kudos. The library use is up across the board and pretty significantly, like ten percent. Um even the use, virtual use is up ten percent. The only thing that was down was magazine downloads. I thought that was curious, but but the other thing I wanted to, or I noticed, was the teen and youth programs. Holy moly. Uh very impressive.
Yeah, thank you.
And especially in the summertime. So yay, love the stu- student volunteers.
Yeah.
It's noticed.
Thank you, yeah, we're.
Kudos to stay up.
Gangbuster. Is that um, what was that, Baphlaine Bill magician that was here? We had a line.
Oh, yes.
The little kitty cat or the bunny piece?
Yeah, there was a line out the door into the comments. We're anticipating that with the alligator um event tomorrow.
Yeah.
So Youth Services is ready for that. We're hoping there's more shopping that takes place in the library.
And it's a Belgian bunny if anyone wants to get one.
Yeah.
Don't bring it around me, alligator.
Yeah, good point. There will be another stoppage in the evening.
I bet I'm a bunny. I bet that fighting will turn. Disappear.
Is there any other other? No?
Oh, sorry, the the August third meeting, are we supposed to go to that?
That budget, yeah.
Working session?
Yeah.
I just didn't have it on my calendar.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh to that end, I am not able to attend August tenth.
That's building.
Building grounds, okay. Yeah, so it's second one.
Do you think you all will be here for the August board meeting, regulars?
Fifteenth.
Okay, great. Yep, and I have on my calendar.
Uh and that is uh.
The spot for the Meyership, Meyer Scholarship.
Yes. Which will be at uh six thirty. So we'll come early for that.
Yes. Yes.
Can we have food trucks again? Not just.
I know, right?
We don't need a food truck. We've got the wonderful and talented.
We will have refreshments, yes.
Oh, I was, I was kinda joking. We always have refreshments for our scholarship. Be nice.
Yes.
Make it okay tonight, though.
Lyndon does a great job.
Yeah, so it's a special, special evening. Find food?
Are you baking? No, you're baking. Are you?
Oh, Lord.
And she takes over all the dietary restrictions we've got.
She does.
She is very aware, yes. She takes good care of it.
Great, she gives mindsets. She does. She's great.
Um okay, well, yes, our next scheduled board meeting will be uh Tuesday, August fifteenth. And we will meet at seven, but prior to the board meeting will be the Meyer Scholarship Awards at six thirty. And with that, we can adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
During all so much.